To call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knopf? Knopf? Chanzet? Chanzet? Baron?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien? O'Brien? Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler? Meitzler? Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden. McFadden? We have nine out of 14.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for VATV for broadcast. Anybody that's from the public will use the microphone directly in front of me up here that's on the single stock right there. And then item number three would be approval of the minutes from August 18th, 2020. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Uer, second by Baron. Roll call, please.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
So McFadden has his point. Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf? Chanzet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien? Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler? And Malley?
Aye.
Eleven out of 14.
Okay. Record reflect that McFadden and Chanzet are here at 7:03. Next up would be item number five, which is matters from the public for items not on our agenda tonight. Is there anybody from the public that wants to address us for something not on the agenda? Yeah, if you want to come up and use the microphone up here in the middle? No, no problem.
Hi, everybody. My name is Natalie Anderson, co-owner of Beardsguard Barbers and River Peak Apothecary, but tonight I'm here speaking on behalf of all of the businesses on the block between 31 Main, Lincoln, and First Streets, which we have been collectively calling the corridor. This block is full of charm and history, being a legitimate historic district. We have more and more businesses opening up on the block that are full of driven, creative people who care deeply about Batavia and the community here. We also have a remarkably huge parking lot out back that nobody seems to know about that would be a wonderful spot for events in addition to parking to patronize the businesses there. For businesses everywhere, 2020 has been rough. We all closed down in March, and when we reopened in June, it was too planned but incredibly disruptive construction out front. Most, if not all, of the businesses here have lost business to potential customers assuming we weren't open, to giving up because they couldn't find parking out front and there is no signage indicating where to park instead, to people just flying past the construction as fast as possible and not giving a thought to the businesses languishing on the other side. We have been informed that in October and November, leading up to the busiest time of the year where we make most of our money, that we will be losing our front sidewalk and all access to the front entrances of our building, which will mean all customers have to enter our businesses through the parking lot doors in the back. And that there is the problem. The parking lot in our, in our, our parking lot is the actual Wild West, and not only because it's so full of potholes that you feel like you're riding a horse on rocky terrain when you drive through. Our clients run, or all of the clients on the block run gamut with the businesses. Lots of families, specifically young children, men, women, and of course, dogs, thanks to the wolf wash. For the six years we have been on this block and the 20-plus that some of our neighbors have been here, our staff and clients have been harassed, catcalled. There has been truly vile graffiti on the properties of businesses directed at particular staff members of some businesses. Guns have been pulled on people in the parking lot. We have found constant broken bottles and glass, needles, bags of trash, blood, vomit, and worse bodily fluids, actual teeth, and more and worse that I won't recount in this setting. It's bad enough in the daytime, but it gets exponentially worse once the sun comes down. When the city and police are contacted, we're often told that the parking lot here is private property and it's the responsible, responsibility of the property owners to deal with such things, or at most that they'll send a car out before nothing comes of it. On the other hand, when we've wanted to use the parking lot for an event, or to have a food truck, or to make a dumpster corral so they aren't strewn all over the lot, then suddenly it's city property and we aren't allowed to do such things. We know the city of Batavia wants storefronts to be filled with thriving businesses that are truly invested in Batavia. Here we are. I have two storefronts on this block. My entire life is invested here. It's time we all start investing in the cog that holds this historic block together and the parking lot we all share. What needs to happen to make any of this happen is for the city and businesses to have real clarity on who is responsible for this parking lot and who has the authority to make decisions regarding its use and maintenance. With the front sidewalk being removed next month, this is not an issue we can wait on until next year or until the pandemic is over. The businesses on this block will be facing an entirely new level of hardship coming up into this fall that none of the other businesses in Batavia will be facing. We need help specifically, we need help now. We need this parking lot cleaned up, patrolled regularly, better lit, and with real signage to point people there, and we needed plans for its use and management going forward and approved by the city. We are here to make an actionable plan with the city to make this a safe, clean, and thriving area for staff and customers. Now, the people behind me have all sorts of different businesses, from customer service based businesses to insurance, to a garage, all sorts of different customers. However, there are a couple of them here that have some real war stories that I really hope you guys would be willing to hear. I have plenty of my own, but there's some that are worse than mine, and I hope they can speak as well. Thank you very much.
Okay. Come on up, whoever's next. And we only need names for the record, we don't need any addresses or anything else.
Okay. My name is Sydney.
My name is Ryan. Owners of?
I own a building over. This is Andrea. She's also a business and a stylist. We are a building filled with six women. We have encountered catcalling. Catcalling. We had our gate that we put up in the back to protect our air conditioning unit, our doors, our, our property. We don't even know where to start.
So it's been what, three years now?
Yes.
Since, so we bought the building three years ago. Built, it used to be an old tattoo shop. We tore everything out, built it out, and you know, just really wanted to-
We've been trying to really bring that to light.
Bring some fresh life to it. So she opened up a salon, and immediately we started having issues with the bar next door.
Excuse me, can you get closer to the mic, please?
Yeah, absolutely, sorry. Masks. So, starting three years ago when she bought the place, got it going. Shortly after, we started having issues with the bar next door. I've tried taking, taking it up and talking to the owner of the bar, where he has been apologetic, but doesn't go beyond saying, he washes his hands saying he can't control the people that come in and out of his place.
He also stated that he would not help with any camera footage that he supposedly has.
Yeah, so he says he has cameras.
We have made multiple police reports of the damage done to our property.
To, to be specific, there was no fence in the back. We put the fence up specifically for-
This reason.
For the reason because there used to be broken bottles all on the back by where people would walk in and out.
They would hide?
People would lock up their bikes for weeks on end to our property. They would pee, yeah, urinate.
Go to the bathroom, vomit.
It's, it used to be just kind of a free-for-all behind our, our business. I, like I said, I've tried talking to the owner. We ended up putting up the fence. Within 24 hours of the fence going up, there was obscenities written all over it before I could even like stain it or make it, do it, you know, finish the project. There was obscenities written on it, there was pieces of wood-
Directed towards the stylists, the women-
Yeah.
And the customers that come into our building for business, asking us to come over and perform sexual services to the patrons at the bar.
Yeah, people walking in and out, just hanging out in the back. Used to, for, you know, still do, just complete vulgar, rude.
To which we had to paint our entire fence black to cover up what they wrote.
Yeah, what they were drawing and writing and everything else. Boards had been broken off of it, and it's, it's more the disrespect to the girls that worked there than the property, you know, pieces of wood you give to put back, but-
Well, at the same time, it's been over and over.
Yeah.
We have tried to work with owner of the bar. We've tried to work with what he said is his manager. Nothing has been done, no compensation, no help taken care of or cleaning it up. I can't tell you how many times I've had to clean up-
I've gone out of pocket just to, to fix everything up.
I've had to clean up throw up, them going to the bathroom. They've smashed glasses on the back door, which was brand new, left dents, stained it. There's been blood, there's been a lot of drugs, a lot.
Yeah, we've seen drug deals go down back there. We've seen-
Lot of empty bottles, like little hair putting bottles in the parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, back there, I was there today, and they're walking in and out with their masks on and just-
No care for-
Just complete lack of respect towards, obviously, themselves and their patrons and other people around them.
And I do want to state that in the front of our building, where we have the big glass windows, they will stand in front at night and stare at or mouth profanities or sexual comments to the women, the stylists, that are inside of my building getting their hair done. Nobody has helped us deal with this issue, and nobody hears us when we try to talk to them directly.
We spoke to the police department multiple times. They said that unless we have cameras and we catch somebody in the act of doing something, there's nothing they can do about it.
I have cameras inside of my building, but the police have told us that we need to hardwire cameras outside of my building to have some sort of resolution.
Hard evidence, physical, physical proof to preach the end of what we can possibly do to, you know, make this better.
And one of the issues I do have with that is that my property has already been damaged, and I don't really feel that putting cameras up there, they're going to just be broken or taken down, and I'm spending my money that I'm trying so hard. I have everything put into this building. I fell in love with this building, it needed a lot of work, and I did it myself along with Ryan, and it's just, it's really hard. I moved my business from Geneva to Batavia. I've loved working in Batavia and having my business in Batavia, but this is getting really, really hard.
It's, it's caused issues with some of the clientele, some of the clients where people have been kind of disgusted by the things that they've been called or said, and-
What they've seen watching into the building?
It's costing us money.
It's not safe.
It's not safe.
I mean, you don't like to work late at night. Usually in salons, we're there till like 9, 10, you know, depending on what we have going on. I don't want to walk out the back door by myself. I don't want to have to, what am I going to do? I'm going to walk my client, oh, here, I'll walk you up to the car.
We're in Batavia.
Yeah, it's, it just shouldn't be like this.
It's not.
And it's gotten to a point where there's nothing getting done and there's, and can't really take it anymore, so.
And we have, we have children. I have a 12-year-old daughter. Her friends, they'll come to the salon. They don't even feel comfortable. I don't even feel comfortable.
Yeah.
I have to have my own daughter message me when she's letting me know that she's coming to my building.
And we've got to make sure that she's pretty much locked in the back gate so nobody messes with her. It's, it sucks, and it's, you know.
It's sad.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's really sad.
So, I mean, if you guys have anything more to add, I think you guys kind of get our point. We can go on and on about this.
And the lighting at night in that back parking lot is not good. It's very dark. You can't really, I mean, people are in all different corners doing transactions and drinking, and, and they can get in their cars completely hammered.
Hammered, just belligerent.
And hardly even make it out of the parking lot, and if they're still on road.
I was there at 2:00 PM today, and I saw a fight almost break out in the back. It's, and it's, it's not just a nighttime thing, it's not just 10:00 PM, it's, or 2:00 AM when the bar closes, whatever. It's, it's an all-night, all-day kind of belligerence, and I, I mean, it's a bar, I get it, but that's, it can't, it shouldn't affect the businesses around it in this way.
And we're right next door.
And we're, yeah, and we are the direct building next door, so, yeah, like I said, if you guys get your points.
Just really like some help?
So we're coming to you if you, if there's anything you guys can help us with or-
Any questions?
Yeah, if there's, yeah, if you guys have any suggestions or how do we do this?
Where is I?
Can you give the address of your building?
Yeah, 115 South Batavia Avenue.
Thank you.
Well, I think from our standpoint, I think first thing is probably going to be to get with the police-
Yes.
Administration and figure out what we can do from an enforcement standpoint or from a patrol standpoint to see how we can affect that. I think the other thing we can do is get with our Public Works Department and find out what we have back there as far as poles or anything we can put lighting on, anything we could change with the lighting to try to light that parking lot up better. And then I think we need to have our staff figure out exactly what our boundaries are on that property, so that way we can figure out a plan to go forward as far as what we can do from the city standpoint with the lot, what we can do with the resident, or with the, the business owners and the building owners, because sometimes they're not the same, and figure out what our next step should be, because I really feel like, didn't realize it was this bad. I haven't been in that bar in a long time. I hate to say that I haven't been on that block a whole lot, other than drive through the construction on a regular basis, because it does extend down into my ward, so I kind of want to know what access is like through there, but I really haven't tried to go in or out of any of those businesses, except for maybe picking up a pizza once. I'm trying to think what else I've been on that block for, not, not a whole lot.
And I think that's the change that we're looking for. Instead of be, like, the main downtown Batavia area, we're trying to, that's trying to be extended by really good businesses over there and not just be forgotten about and thrown off to the side.
No, and, and don't think we forgot about you. I mean, we're, we've talked about this the whole time since we started with streetscapes on River Street, is that's another quadrant that we want to have a streetscape done on, to have the front of the businesses easily accessible from the public. Granted, I think the Main Street project has grown in scope, especially in front of your buildings, and that's been a real change there. I don't think we expected to go all the way down to First Street or all the way to Elm Street, do all that work, and completely tear all that out. I know that the, the sidewalks and everything have to get redone because of the elevation changes at that corner, so I'm sure that that's, again, a, a big detriment to try to do that, and I think whatever we can do in the next few weeks to try to get that straightened out behind those businesses so that you can use those for your actual entrances during the construction. We've dealt with this in other places when we had the bridge redone, when we had River Street torn up. We will do whatever is feasible to get people in and out of the businesses, so that way, if that means that there's a walkway that's dedicated with railings to get in and out, we've done all kinds of strange things to make sure that businesses are accessible. We do not want to see bad things happen to the businesses in town. We're trying everything we can to try to make sure that any money we have available that we can do as far as grants, we're talking about another round of them here tonight, to make sure we can get that money out there to help businesses during this time. And, you know, this maybe is a situation that came in under the radar that I don't think many of us were aware of. I mean, I've known that there's been issues down there in the past, not aware of any of this stuff.
That's why we're here.
Right, and I, I'm glad that you're here, and we will do something. We will figure out whatever we can do with both Public Works, with lighting, and with, you know, I don't know, I don't know if the, I don't know if the liquor commissioner has anything to say about what we could do with the bar that has issues like this.
A couple of the most urgent things that I think we're asking for, primarily, most of our clients, I'll tell you, we've been there for six years. I cannot tell you how many clients right now are saying, "Oh, my God, I have no idea you guys had a back parking lot." Really, yeah, it's new. No. But just some legitimate, like, almost detour-style signage that would direct people from their usual parking spots in front to the back would be like the fastest, most immediate help you could give us.
Yeah, and we do have a sign shop, and we've made a lot of signs like that to direct other, to other parking lots as we've moved things around with traffic patterns, so we should be able to affect something like that. I'm sure Laura could follow that up for us-
Absolutely.
And make sure that we get something within the next couple of days out there. That's a pretty quick turnaround to have, you know, parking for all these businesses behind the businesses off of First Street, whatever, whatever the sign needs to say to direct people out there.
Well, one thing that the, the city has in this block right now that it may not have had in the past is a, an incredibly united front of businesses. We are all in a Facebook group, messages, we talk to each other constantly, so we are, we are ready to throw down to get this fixed and better, and you have all of us, like, ready, willing, and waiting to just do whatever we need to do. So, we're excited.
Thanks for listening. Pass it on, yeah, there's other people that want to speak.
Yeah, I just want to talk real quickly. I know we've taken a lot of time, but it's very important. I'm Scott Queen, I'm at 121 South Batavia Avenue. Been there since 97. This has ebbed and flowed, you know. I've learned that if I want to ditch a car, to do it in the back parking lot, and I can just walk away from it, it'll stay there. I've, there are spots in the parking lot that aren't safe, there are dips, and there's a hole by my back door that seems to be just sinking. It's, it's really not safe back there. I, I pick up garbage at least once a week, most of it's Budweiser bottles, which is fine if you want to drink beer, but there are dumpsters everywhere. So I'm picking up broken glass and picking up glasses where someone has just put them outside their car door and gotten in the car and driven away, and I know it was, I know where they come from. So, somebody needs to watch the back door there. It's really awful to hear some of these people who have spent so much money on the block to be going through such hell and making their staff feel unsafe. Well, they are unsafe. I've had cars keyed, I've, you know, I can't even tell you how many times I go out there and kids are smoking pot in their car, they come off 31, smoke pot, and they leave. They can do it because there's nobody there. We just need to get people there and protect that block and make it, we're not being unreasonable, and I really appreciate the feedback, but it's really, it's really tiring. So, thank you.
Yeah, just, first and foremost, I want to say I apologize that that was going on. I know that, like Scott had said, the miniature bottles have kind of ebbed and flowed from time to time, but to hear some of this just really, absolutely disgusts me. And I, I just imagine, if we had, if we had been incurring some of these problems on River Street, we'd have shut that thing down so fast, and we put a lot of emphasis on businesses in that area to do programming, to step up their game, and they did. And meanwhile, across town, this is going on? It's absolutely disgusting. And I do, I would second what you had said, Mr. Mayor, as part of, as the liquor commissioner. I would call on a review of any liquor licenses that are currently outstanding. We, as a body, authorized the repayment or the covering of the liquor licenses for all of them in the downtown, and knowing that this is going on and this is one of them really makes me mad. So if there's any reviews on any liquor licenses that need to be done, I would join what Alderman Wolfe said, and I think that needs to be done at a minimum.
Alderman, Chanzet, you got a question?
Yeah, I would say to any of the business owners that are here, some of the testimony that you just gave us, first of all, thank you for sharing the information. I'm kind of interested in the things that you didn't share. We're on TV right now, and just thank you for some of the language you probably didn't now have to listen to. But that said, you guys have a Facebook group? You've got a neighborhood watch already set up, and a lot of the things that you mentioned, while might, might not necessarily require you to call 911, might be something for code enforcement. So you might contact code enforcement anytime you see an opportunity like that, we can come out, take a look at it, and if there is a violation there, we have a process that has some teeth to it to correct some of those types of problems very quickly. And I also, I just, speaking in general terms, I, I sympathize with the front door issue, so I know that we will make that a priority. I used to just pull up next to the pizza place, run and get my pizza and leave. It's a little harder to do that right now, but that said, every time I've had to get a pizza, it's been very bright and light outside. I have not been there when it's dark. So we definitely do need to make this a priority, and thanks for, thanks for coming forward and sharing your stories.
Yeah?
Good evening. My name is Sue Papulorum. I live at 312 First Street. My husband operates First Garage at 318 First Street. So the garage is in that city parking lot. We are the lucky individuals that are there 24/7 after these businesses close and, and have said they're. There is quite a bit of, our, our guess is illicit activity, illegal, people go in their cars, people drive through the parking lot, walk up to windows, transactions, driving away, people go in their cars, I don't know, and then they get out and then they go back in the bar. There's more activity in the parking lot than there is in the bar. And I do know that the bar lights on the outside are off at night, which does create more shadows. And, and the, the people that hang out in that parking lot are completely dependent upon who is bartending that night. Certain people draw certain people to that area. So I just wanted to say that, you know, we're there, you know, 24/7, we see it at 2:00 in the morning, and it's, it's, it's just a little disheartening that people can't be more respectful of themselves, first off, and then pass it on to being respectful to others. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi. I'm Annie Scholl from Harthenhammer General. Much like First Street Garage, the parking lot is always my front door, so I just want to say that I think this parking lot is more visited by our town than folks might think. Children ride their bikes through there, families walk through there. When folks have funerals, they often park back there when there's overflow parking. You know, there's multiple salons, the dentist, the dog wash, so there's a lot of services that people are also attending. So really and truly, the state of the parking lot is embarrassing for visitors. I know a lot of us, we have people visiting from out of town. We get a lot of folks coming from Chicago, and as Scott Queen has said, there has been times where there's like six-packs and things that we have to clean up. On that point, I just want to say I have called the police, I do have a case number for finding such litter in the parking lot. I often work late because I'm constantly making candles, and when I leave, as she was saying, it's not always the bar patrons, there are parking lot parties happening at midnight, 1:00 AM. So it really and truly is, it's, it's pervasive, and it's stemming from the, the lack of lighting and the status of the parking lot. Of course, we know when things don't look nice, people don't want to treat them nicely. So I just want to say, on behalf of my business owners that need the front walk, I appreciate everything you can do for that, but also, please don't mistake, we also want the parking lot to be taken care of, because as we've been saying, we think of ourselves as a very artsy, vibrant area, and we have a lot of things we would like to do in the back parking lot, but when there's holes and water collecting, we can't do that. So I appreciate everyone listening, and I don't know if anyone else has anything they'd like to say, but thank you. lot, but when there's holes and water collecting, we can't do that. So I appreciate everyone listening. And I don't know if anyone else has anything they'd like to say, but thank you for your time.
I want to thank everybody for coming down tonight and, I guess, opening our eyes to some of the things that are going on. Do you want to come up? Come on up.
John Happel, 129 South Batavia Avenue. Just put my two cents in. I've invested a lot of money in the building that I just rehabbed, and I'm 100% behind everything that's been said. I've watched a lot of the same things and just concerned, for sure.
Thank you.
Ellen, has a comment?
Abby?
First of all, thank you, and thank you to Natalie and Annie for organizing the Facebook chat that has instigated a lot of these conversations and for allowing Mark and I to be a part of it, too, so we can listen in and put in our two cents. One thing I wanted, I know I've mentioned it in the group, but I also wanted to make this group aware, ever since I started spending a lot more time in that parking lot, the dumpsters were my number-one thing that drove me crazy because they just get dumped, dumpsters get dumped just all haphazardly throughout that space. So it is, you kind of have to weave around dumpsters when you're driving or biking through that area. So a dumpster corral is really high on my priority list, and so I've been putting together a form that I was going to, and I've mentioned it on a call with city staff before, too, and it seemed like something that is doable. So I'll be sending along information to all of you to kind of understand waste needs and what consolidation we might be able to accomplish back there and find a spot that works with the city to put, you know, to at least clean up those sightlines, to remove that from the immediate backs of our properties, et cetera, et cetera. And then to what Scott said, too, and I think this will be a really great feedback loop that will be accomplished here, is that as we get more people back there and as people come up with uses for this parking lot that are really positive and artsy and productive for everybody, that's going to create a lot more casual surveillance back there, and we will just also naturally see a turning of the way it's used and the way it's respected and the way it's treated. And I'm just really grateful that you guys have banded together and been able to start to push this forward because it was going to take some sort of a tipping point, and we're there, and so now we're going to hopefully see it turn around in a really positive way. So thank you so much for coming, Ms. Paul.
Ellen?
Your Honor?
Yeah. I just want to say on behalf of the Batavia Police Department that many of the issues that you've heard tonight have not gone unnoticed or unreported or unreacted by them. We've got quite a case file in the works. I don't want to discuss particular details of it, but the Batavia Police Department has got their eyes on what's going on here. We were going to, tonight, I think, maybe suggest to the council that it's probably time that we rework the liquor ordinance in town and maybe bring some new teeth into it. And we got, I've talked to our lawyer here with, I haven't talked to you, but I've talked to his boss about it, and so we're working on some stuff that we want to bring in that will hopefully kind of put the bite more into some of this stuff that's going on. It's been an interesting thing to deal with in this particular location because that ownership in that alley, which has already been brought up, is probably one of the most intensified puzzles of ownership that we have in the entire city of Batavia. And you have to appreciate that most of this was done, this ownership and these lots drawn, were done probably, some of them in the last two centuries ago, in the 1800s. And so we've had this thing, and it's been bouncing around, and then there's been some people have just bought persons of the parking lot, and then the city went in there and bought part of the parking lot, and then some of it doesn't even have an access to anything other than to go on the neighbor's property to get where they're going. There's a lot of, you know, missing issues here that come together and really cause it to have a moment of pause. But I'm pleased that this group has shown up tonight and expressed their concerns and their complaints because it's something that certainly needs to be aired out and brought to close attention. There's been some, so I have been alerted, there's been some interesting comments made on Facebook pages in the last few weeks about certain people, myself included, about how hard-nosed I am and whatever have you, and dealing with some of this situation. So we'll see where we all go here, but this is a high-priority issue, I know, on the part of the Batavia Police Department. It is not being overlooked, and sometimes when you get into these types of investigations, it takes a while because sometimes you have to build cases. And as they've already indicated, some things happen there. We know we're bad, but we don't have the proof or we don't have the evidence. And so sometimes there's other ways to work that, and Chief Yule and his department, I know, are working very diligently to bring that to the forefront of this thing. So I guess I just encourage those behind me to continue their communication. Feel free to call me or the city administrator or your alderman, if you want, and let everybody know what's going on because I think we're very interested to hear what's the neighborhood's concerns and what's happening there, and we will be trying to address it.
Thank you.
Your Honor, before you had mentioned, I know that it's a different case. We had a patchwork situation with another parking lot in town where we were able to find some opportunities for some land swaps and whatnot. Does it make sense for the city to look at acquiring some property or at least doing something?
We're trying to examine it. This one's got some alleys and stuff.
For sure, yeah.
That has multiple ownerships in it. I mean, you know, the alley's owned half by this person and half by this person, and then you talk to one and the other one says, "Well, I don't like them," or whatever, "I don't want to lose my access," or whatever their issues may be. We've got that infamous walkway there that's right there by Keller Williams Realty that, you know, used to be the quote-unquote "alleyway" from the avenue back there. And some of the realtors at Keller Williams over the years have gone in and personally donated money and planted plants and all kinds of stuff to kind of jazz that up. And then they go in and people are in there tearing the bushes out or the flowers, cutting the flowers down or whatever they're trying to do. So there's a lot of moments of animosity, and certainly what the city is doing right now out there in the front is going to kind of change the levels and the complexion of it a little bit. And I think the lighting will be much more significant there, and hopefully we can maybe transpose some of that same lighting we're going to have on the avenue into the alley to kind of further enhance it. We're probably going to need some support of some of the alley ownerships as far as running some underground wiring and whatever to get some of this lighting back there, but it certainly would be something I'd strongly be in support of.
Yeah, and I think before we start doing anything, we need to know what the picture is. Who owns what? And, you know, what we need to do to try to make that work back there so that way it becomes something a little bit simpler. I deal with a similar thing where I work, two blocks north of that. We actually own half of the alleyway that accesses the city parking lot, and then the other half, I believe, is owned by the insurance agent to the west of us. And I don't know if the city...
Ellen?
Anything but a very small strip going down the center of it, but it's always remained open in the 36 years that I've been there because it's been a working relationship between all the parties that are there. So that's something, I think, especially moving forward, hopefully everybody that's sitting back there tonight knows that they want to be here for the next 20 years or more, and we can all work together to try to make something better for that area. I think that's the main goal. That's the end goal of this. And so I really am happy that you've banded together, got somebody as a spokesman, and came in with a very organized, you know, display of what reality is out there today. And I can guarantee you that, to a T, everybody sitting up here wants to change that. So we're going to do whatever we can to make sure that happens, and I think somebody on the phone wants to say the same thing. Hello?
Yeah, Ellen, Scott here. Just so you know, I had done some of the work on renewing some easements we had there because this was actually done as a special service area, about 20-some years ago. And I did a lot of the work that did the research on, you know, which pieces we owned and which pieces were just easements. So it's kind of a mix of half and half of what the city owns and half what's an actual easement. So I do have a pretty good idea of, you know, where the boundaries are on that, and I've kind of worked with Public Works on that as well.
Okay. So that's, I think, where we're at now on this, and I think you just handed out cards, so everybody, we'll try and keep everybody in loop, or maybe get everybody on an email group or something so that way we can keep communication lines open and let you know what the city is trying to do and then what we're going to have to work together on.
Yeah, if everyone could send me an email, and that way I'll have all of you in one email group and so that I can communicate with you as a group. Thank you.
Thank you for spending the time and coming down tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Somebody else on the phone want to say something?
Yeah, Alderman Wolf, this is Chief Yule. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Yeah, so I just want to, you know, apologize for the experiences some of the business owners and residents over there have experienced in the past. I just want to, I don't want to beat a dead horse. It's a kind of a complex area over there, obviously, public and private. You've got commercial, you've got residential properties above some of them, so it's a complex area for us to deal in. But I want you to know that we're not ignoring that area. Batavia Police contacts have exceeded over 60 since the beginning of the year. So we're regularly out there for bar checks. We have about 20 calls for service, many of them self-initiated, and that's just for the property that resides under the full-moon's umbrella. The rest of them, I'm sure we've had some other contacts out there in that area. So again, we will be happy to listen to any specific concerns anybody has, and please feel free to give me a call any time of day when we can send somebody out there and meet with you about specific issues or concerns. You know, the suggestions by one of our officers to put in cameras, obviously not a mandate, but my guess is they were probably trying to give recommendations on improvements by environmental design, just to increase the safety level over there. But, you know, we are not blind to the issues over there, and like I said, we do spend quite a bit of time in that area. I know that it may sound ironic to some of the people that are there tonight, but we are out there quite a bit.
Thank you, Chief. Come on up.
I just wanted to say one more thing with the construction. We've had a couple of times where the water's been turned off when we've gotten to work at the salon, and I know there's the barber shop and the dental office right next to us, and we've had no warning. It wasn't an accident, but they've come by, like, maybe at 8:00 in the morning and told other businesses, like, "Hey, we're going to shut the water off today," but there's no note on the door. So we've actually put chemicals on people's heads and had to rinse them off with bottles of water. So that's just one more thing with the construction. Like, we really need to know if, we get accidents happen, but we really need to know if the water's going to be shut off, whether it's a note on the door or something.
We'll review that with the...
Absolutely. That definitely is the policy, and I'm so sorry that that did not...
It happened at once.
Okay.
Laura, when you start that...
Make sure they get noticed, too, yeah.
I wonder if they're not in that notice group.
I'm sorry, what?
I wonder if they're not in the notice group.
When we affect utilities, we actually do door hangers. So, and it should be at least 24 hours' notice that your utilities will be affected. So I'd like to look into this instance because it certainly is outside of what our policy is.
Mark?
I didn't have anything else to say because everybody said everything I was thinking anyway, but Laura, when that email group is started, can you include Abby and me in that?
Sure.
So we have that information as well.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on then to item number six, discussion on the update on the road diet study.
Yeah, so there has been progress in that regard in that the state of Illinois has a 14th issuance of their ITEP grant funding. And the ITEP grant fundings are to improve the bikeability, walkability, and safety of the road system in Illinois. They doubled the amount of grant funding that is available, and per grant, up to $2 million. And so we wanted to take the time because I know that we said we were going to have to take another look at what our strategic plan-action items are. But the studying, the appropriateness of a road diet on Route 31, was on our strategic plan. And so we just wanted to bring the topic back here because it will be necessary for us to demonstrate as part of our ITEP grant application that there is public support for pursuing this as a project at this time so that in the event we are awarded the grant, that there are assurances that that would move forward. And so I just wanted to open the discussion with you tonight whether you, as our elected officials, still want to pursue the studying of the road diet going forward in the current time.
Yes.
Yes.
I believe it was unanimous that evening.
Yes, it was, but that was pre-COVID.
We just weren't sure what the state was going to do, but you were a united front that night.
Exactly. Abby?
And the webinar that I listened to about the ITEP funding, Active Transportation Alliance, has been really involved with getting the word out about it. They talked about not only applying for your Phase 1, but bundling Phase 1, Phase 2, and even construction into your grant proposal because they want to see whole projects and they will, like, they could possibly fund whole projects up to $2 million. So it wouldn't even just be, you know, let's study it, find out, but it is like, all right, are we a go-go? Like, you know, we're going to push for this and get, you know, wrangle of support and then actually maybe do it because that might be all wrapped up in that, which would be great because that would be a great project to get funded.
And I'd also like to share that we have been encouraged by IDOT to go forward with the steps of this process. We were wondering whether they would accept a traffic study that was being done right now because times are a little weird, but they definitely said that they would accept the traffic counts and such that would come from a road study that would be done during this time. So they're really encouraging us to move forward with our plans.
Laura?
I think it does more than just traffic changes. I mean, the more that I've talked to people in the last six months or so with a lot more pedestrian and bike traffic this summer, so many people have made the comments about how the crosswalks, the flashing light crosswalks on 25 or Hart Road or anywhere else are easier to cross on a two-lane road than they are on a four-lane road. And I think that that in and of itself, as the road gets narrowed down, makes even more sense to have those or have more of those that would make those crossings easier. So I think it's more than just the road diet and trying to get people to slow down and then allowing it to open up in the couple of blocks downtown to where you can look for places to go, look for the business community to find those places to park, and then knowing that it just opens up in downtown and the rest of it is all much more controlled and hopefully slower. Mark?
Yeah, I think for the benefit of the business owners here, if you weren't entirely sure what we meant by road diet, that would be eliminating two lanes of traffic on Route 31, so it would be mainly a two-lane road with, like, a center-turning lane generally. But what that would do would slow traffic down in front of your businesses and make them even more visible. So when Laura says we need to have public support, we need public support from you guys, too, because that does, it will directly affect you and it should positively affect you. It didn't take as much to do as road construction because it's really about restriping more than anything, but it should be something that would be beneficial to you and that it does, again, create much more bikeability and walkability in town. And that's the reason we really want to pursue it is because there ends up being a barrier for people to get across town.
In fact, the roadway from Wilson Street to Fabian Parkway, that roadway during most of it is only 36 feet wide. So each one of those lanes, you know, couldn't be built by today's IDOT standards. They're too narrow. And so the thought is that we would create two bidirectional, 10-foot lanes for people to travel in, the center lane being the turning lane where people are slowing down to turn, make that nine feet because then that would allow four feet on either side of the road for a nice bike lane where people could really feel safe inside of that zone. So that would be the plan. I would ask if Gary or if Rahat has joined us, if they have anything that they would like to add to the conversation?
And the application is due on November 2nd, so either end of this month or early next month, I'll bring a resolution so that you can add up it and show support. We'll include that.
And the application is due on November 2nd, so either end of this month or early next month, I'll bring a resolution so that you can add up it and show support. We'll include that with the application that we'll be sending. Abby is also working on getting the letter from Active Alliance, and Abby has, I think, volunteered to gather some more letter of support from business owners and other people too. So we think that by applying for the ITEP funding, because it administered by IDOT, if we get the funding, then IDOT is kind of onboard with the concept, and we don't have to go through the whole hoopla of, you know, getting them convinced. So because it's already IDOT approved, at that point, we can just move to the Phase 1 directly and say, you guys approved it, so let's move to the Phase 1 portion of it.
Good with that. So if they want to put together that and bring it back to us, then we-
Yes.
-vote on that and move that forward so we can get in ahead of the deadline.
Yes. And also, we are going to seek a letter of support, which I'm sure will be granted, is from our Batavia Bicycle Commission as well. Important to get their support. Okay, that's it.
Laura?
Yes.
What about the Batavia Environmental Commission? Because in theory, that also-
Great idea.
Would help.
Chamber and Main Street would be good, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can get a letter from each one of the boards.
And I'm reaching out to the Homestead as well. I know that it's likely the road diet won't extend all the way through the Fabian Parkway, you know-
Intersection.
-that mess. But, but anything to show, you know, traffic slowing down or reducing traffic going to that intersection, also making the street a more comfortable place to walk down from Homestead to downtown will likely also show a real benefit. And they even mentioned senior centers in the call that I was on. Like, if there are senior centers adjacent, you know, this is a really great place to find support.
I have Amanda's cell phone.
Oh, okay, great.
And I'll reach out to George Sheets at the library as well.
And also maybe a group that joined us tonight because of the economic advantages of their customers not having to do this when they pick up pizza or go to Scott's place or anybody else's.
Yes, I've already dropped all of my road diet research into the chat and overwhelmed to see if we can get some support, so.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item number seven, Ordinance 20-56, amending the land use map of the comprehensive plan of the city of Batavia for 2041 Steyer's Court. Laura Callahan?
So there are two ordinances related to this, Ordinance 20-56 and Ordinance 20-57. Both of these just have different addresses, but the issue is related to mainly the same topic. Drew, do you want to present? Or is he on?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes. So yeah, essentially, there are two related items. One happens to just affect the Steyer's Court property, which the city acquired a couple of years ago after we did the work on the comprehensive plan. So that's why it doesn't have that land use designation. And the ordinance tonight would move that to the Parks and Open Space land use designation. The other ordinance tonight does a rezoning, which would be another city-initiated rezoning for city parcels. Essentially, this would take several, eight parcels altogether that serve as detention areas for four different subdivisions, and it would put them in the Parks and Open Space land use designation, which we've been doing that as an ongoing upgrade or update process of city-owned parcels. It's a more restrictive zoning classification and really limits what we can use on the property. So it's really placing it under a zoning category and a zoning control that is appropriate for the use and continual use of the property. So the Plan Commission did review this on August 19. There was one inquiry from the public about the intention of this rezoning and whether it was related to past actions about SSAs in that area. This is not related to that. This is, again, just cleaning up the zoning map for city-owned parcels, putting them in the proper zoning district for the use. So the Plan Commission did recommend approval by a vote of 7 to 0 on both the land use map amendment and the zoning map amendment. And the ordinance is for you tonight would implement that. And so staff is recommending approval of both Ordinance 2056 and 2057.
Thank you, Drew. Does anybody have any questions, comments? The fact that I think that nobody's here in the audience kind of clarified up the initial discussion that I think there was concerns about what did this actually mean? And in the meantime, with the Plan Commission going through that process, resolved it so that that has been taken care of. So with no additional, I move that we approve to City Council, Ordinance 20-56, amending the land use map of the comprehensive plan for the city of Batavia, 2041 Steyer's Court.
Second.
Motion by Callahan, second by Beck. Roll call.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler? Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf? Chanzet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
And O'Brien. Motion carried, 11 to 0.
Then the second ordinance was Ordinance 20-57. I move we approve Ordinance 20-57, amending the official zoning map, 950 Moorhead Drive, 734 Ridge Lawn Trail, 2041 Steyer's Court, 960, 970, 1101, and 1106, Wind Energy Pass, City of Batavia applicant.
Second.
Motion by Callahan, second by Beck. Any additional on this? Roll call, please.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler? Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf? Chanzet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
And O'Brien. Motion carried, 11 to 0.
Okay. Next up is Resolution 20-98-R variation from the subdivision regulations for extension of the expiration of final plat for Menard 2 Batavia Resubdivision.
Thank you. And both of those last two can go on. Consent. This one related to Menard's is, back in June, we approved Resolution 20-77R, which was the plat of subdivision to consolidate the lots. As it turned out, that this is being necessitated because the recording of that plat must be recorded within three months of the city council approval. And we are extending by this resolution an additional nine months for a total period of one year from the approval. The reason for this is efficiency and saving staff time and saving times for the applicant. Drew, do you have anything else to add on this one?
No, essentially that, I mean, that is the long and short of it. Essentially, because Menard's will not have control of all the property until the new pond is open south of McKee Street, that's kind of the reason that we're looking at this timeline of a year. So hopefully, within that timeframe, they will have finished the work, taken control of the property, and then we can record the plat with the county recorder.
Thank you, Drew. Anyone have any questions, comments? Anyone on the phone? Hearing none. I move we approve to City Council, Resolution 20-098R, approving an extension of validity for the final plat of subdivision for Menard 2 Batavia Resubdivision, 300 North Randall Road, Menard, Inc., applicant.
Second.
Motion by Callahan, second by Beck. Roll call.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler? Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf? Chanzet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
And O'Brien. Motion carried, 11 to 0.
Okay.
That can also go on?
Consent?
Yep.
Okay. Next up will be item number 10, Resolution 20-106-R, authorizing execution of Task Order Number 21 with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated for Carriage Crest Recharge Basin Dewatering Well Analysis, Phase 1, Part B.
Okay. This is what we've talked about several different times, moving forward with the Carriage Crest, the drainage problems that we have out in Carriage Crest subdivision. And this is the next phase or next thing on the list. Do you want to explain any of what was in your memo, Gary, or?
Sure, I can provide a summary. Just recently, we completed a preliminary study with Engineering Enterprises, and the study that's before you tonight is a proposal. We're just referring to it as Part B because really, it is still part of a Phase 1 study. It's not to the design stage yet. As part of the study that was just completed, Engineering Enterprises identified several different options, and the general consensus of the committee after their presentation was to try and pursue options that would provide a higher level of protection. And the one option that was mentioned during the first study was a gravity sewer option, however, that also had a cost of $3.5 million estimated. So we've used that $3.5 million as a benchmark, and our goal with this study, this Part B study, is to try and look at other alternative options and see if we can develop an other alternative option that works from an engineering standpoint, that provides a high level of protection, and has a lifecycle cost less than $3.5 million. So that's kind of the goal. I kind of outlined the scope there in the fourth paragraph. We're going to do a more detailed analysis of the recharge basin, several soil borings, modeling soil layers, looking at groundwater, monitoring wells, so we can identify groundwater flows, looking at environmental issues related to the soil samples, additional, some additional hydrology and hydraulic surface runoff work will be performed. And our underlying goal is that with the Part B study, we will definitively be able to identify a solution to go forward with, that we would then go forward into the design phase and hopefully ultimately construction. As is stated, like in my last paragraph, and I'll drop back in a second, council needs to keep in mind that a solution in the $3.5 million, $4 million range may be what is determined to be the best solution and the least cost. So at some point in time, the city would have to develop or realize how it's going to get the revenue source to support a project of that cost. With this project, with this task order, this engineering study, we have $45,000 currently budgeted. That was originally intended to be design work, but it obviously will now be used for the continuation of this Phase 1. There's another $16,000 which was in the budget that was kind of placed on hold due to COVID budget concerns. We project probably a shortfall in the range of $14,000 to $29,000 by year end. That shortfall would have to be covered by reserves. And then in 2021, we could rebudget the remainder of the engineering costs plus any alternative work items that we find we need to do. Brief word about those. As I kind of said a few minutes ago, we are taking an iterative approach to try and find solutions that are the least cost but provide the best protection and best solutions. So we're going to kind of check off the boxes as we go. That's why we asked for these alternative work items to be pulled out separately. We may not do them, or three quarters of the way through, we might find that we have to do some of them. That's when we'll return to you to be able to get approvals for those. So we're only recommending approval right now of kind of the base proposal. Resolution 120-106 recommends approval in the amount of 109 to 50. That's for Task Order Number 21. And if we need additional alternative work items, we will come back to you with those in the future.
Gary?
Do you expect to spend that whole 109 this year?
No.
Before the end of the year? I'm just wondering if we're going to have to have a budget amendment to get that money out of reserves, or I guess is we'll probably have to take it out of the reserves next year when we get into next year's budget.
So we're only anticipating roughly $75,000 to $90,000 worth of expenditures this year based on the schedule laid out by the engineers. $75,000 to $90,000 would equate to that extra, that shortfall in the $14,000 to $29,000 range.
Okay.
And to answer your question, that would come out of the 2020 budget, but it depends on the line item and how other projects in that line item finish. You may or may not need a budget amendment because if other line items come in lower, then you may not need a budget amendment. So I can't answer that question probably for three months yet.
Okay. That was the only question I had, is where we thought that was going to come from, or would we spend it all this year or not? Does anybody else have any questions on this?
I saw the comment. Just on behalf of all those residents, thank you for keeping this project moving forward. They were so concerned, and they're very happy with what they see in motion now, so thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, we spent a lot of money in other areas in town to try to solve similar life quality issues that I think this is one that we have to look forward to figuring out how to pay for and to get done because, again, if we don't fix those issues with quality of life, you're not going to have the residents in those houses if these problems persist year after year and decade after decade. So we need to figure them out now and get them solved.
Okay, no other comments. I'll make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 20-106-R, authorizing execution of Task Order Number 21 with Engineering Enterprises for Carriage Crest Recharge Basin Dewatering Well Analysis, Part, Phase 1, Part B, in an amount not to exceed 100. Motion by Wolf, second by Chanzet. Roll call.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Callahan? Aye.
Meitzler? Malley? Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf? Chanzet?
Aye.
And Baron?
Aye.
Motion carried, 11 to 0.
And consent on that? Sorry, Dan, you're going to have a lot to read Monday night.
Sounds good.
Okay. Next up would be item number 11, Resolution 20-105-R, amending the intergovernmental agreement with TriCom Central Dispatch. This is listed as our Seventh Amendment. This is a language change that's necessitated. All three cities passing this to get this into the, let's see, similar to what we did for Tri-City Ambulance. This is generally needed due to consolidate service nature of the TriCom Central Dispatch Center and its shared costs and responsibilities with the legacy agency members, the three that started it. Does anybody have any questions? Seems like a pretty simple language change. Is it last year we did this with Tri-City Ambulance? All right. Okay, hearing no comments. I'll make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 20-105-R, amending intergovernmental agreement for TriCom Central Dispatch.
Second.
Motion by Wolf.
Risotto.
Aye, Risotto. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien? Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler? Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf? Chanset?
Aye.
And Baron?
Aye.
Motion carried eleven to zero.
Okay, I'll put that on consent as well. Next up will be item number twelve, discussion entering into an IGA with Park District for dam removal and preserving the depot pond. Alderman Chanset?
She'll go and introduce that to Laura, for her memo today. Thank you.
There actually has been, you know, a tremendous amount that has been going on with regard to our dam here in Batavia, not the least of which is the fact that a couple of weeks ago, a couple of folks on a pontoon boat found themselves in a life or death situation, their craft having gotten stuck on the dam, and one of those people going under that boat and into the boil and needing to be rescued by our police and fire departments. So it becomes even more imperative that we look to address that situation, and we are very fortunate to have a couple of faithful partners in that pursuit, one of those being the Batavia Park District, who, since the time that I have joined the city, have expressed an interest in working with the city to come up with a joint plan to address the issue of removing that dam, and because removing that dam would reduce the level of water, or maybe completely, in the depot pond, which many see as a central feature of our downtown, that we would work in collaboration with one another to, on a project, to remove the dam and correspondingly make sure that we still have the depot pond as that beautiful feature in our downtown. So, there are two parts to this. Number one, the city has been communicating with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, because for really the last twenty years, they have had a process to try to work on removal of these low head dams, because while they do, you know, it's pretty to see all of that water come crashing over the dam, the actuality of it is that it's an incredibly dangerous situation, and so they seek to get removal of all of those dams along the Fox River and other rivers in the state. Currently, they're moving forward with the removal of a significant portion of the dam up in North Aurora, and they are moving into the engineering phase of their project. And that's been a significant change in the program to allow additional funding for municipalities that need to remove their dams, is in the past, IDNR had been willing to fund the actual construction work of removing that dam, but the engineering cost was borne by the municipality. There's been a change that now engineering funding is also available. So it's very good timing for us to be working on this project, and in fact, staff have had several meetings with IDNR, and we have asked them what we might need to do as a municipality in order to make our, put ourselves in the best position to receive the funding to, for the removal of our dam. And just yesterday, I received some of the different elements that IDNR would like to see in a memorandum of understanding that would be entered into probably on a three-party basis between City Council, the Park District Board, and DNR, in terms of who would be responsible for what in the project. In addition to that, the Batavia Park District, I'd like to give them a shout out for doing the heavy lifting on coordinating with an outside consultant, Hitchcock Design, and they are proposing a project that is in two different parts. The first part of the project would consist of an in-depth analysis, a data gathering, community engagement, and focus on further evaluation of the options surrounding the dam and depot pond. And then a second step would be to expand the vision of the river corridor, building off of the most preferred options of how to address the dam and depot pond, and, but also look at other issues like connectivity to the river, branding, expanded recreation options, and the economic opportunities and impacts that such a project would have for our community. And so I, we also would enter into an intergovernmental agreement for those consulting services, for those to be borne fifty-fifty between the city and, with the Park District Board. And I provided you with some draft documents, there were three, there was the memorandum of understanding points that DNR had provided us, there was the draft intergovernmental agreement from the Park District, and then also the scope of work, the draft scope of work from the consultant Hitchcock Design. I would also point out that Hitchcock Design conducted similar projects, both for the city of St. Charles and also for city of Geneva, and that has given them a great deal of familiarity with our particular zone of the Fox River. And so, not asking for a decision on any of these documents tonight, because they aren't even in finalized form, I just wanted to present them to you, and then suggest as a next step that maybe we have a joint meeting of the boards, I don't think we've had that in the last couple of years, but maybe if we could invite the Park Board to join us some night soon, so that we might further progress on these documents. And then I'll just open up the discussion. Alderman Chanset?
Absolutely. What, are we able to have that type of meeting in this room if we're going to have a joint meeting, and how soon is it appropriate to do something like that?
You know, I'd have it next Tuesday if we could, but next Tuesday is actually, I wanted to point out, is our City Council meeting because of the strange way that Labor Day weekend has fallen this year. So, it being Labor Day on Monday, we'll actually have our City Council meeting on September eighth, but we could have, we, I'd like to talk with the Park District, because their ordinary monthly meeting is on September fifteenth. So, I will speak with Allison to see if, whether they want to come on the fifteenth or whether they want to come on the twenty-second.
Okay. In other words, I say, just to get on the same page as quickly as possible.
Yes.
Good idea. I will open up the discussion if anyone wants to comment on the latest developments.
Yeah, I mean, I'm definitely in favor of moving forward on this, I think that's something that we need to do it before the dam does what it wants to do on its own, which would then cause a situation that we're going to look bad for not having done anything for a long time. The only concern I had when I was looking at the MOU, I don't think, the state doesn't care when it says, the city of Batavia is going to pay for it all, but it says in there the city of Batavia is going to pay for it all, and I just want to make sure there's not some legal loophole that somewhere the Park District says, oh, city of Batavia is paying for it all, and they back out, because this agreement with them is only for the planning, it's not for any real construction. I don't know if something can be worded that that's a joint effort between us.
Definitely.
And make sure that that's highlighted.
And I think that's really important, why we have the meeting with them, and face-to-face or mass-to-mass, we get to, we get to, you know, have that said in public, on TV, you know, so that people know that that's the commitment that we want, is it's not just, hey, help us plan this, and then, oh, we don't want to fund it, you're going to have to fund it. I mean, I felt all along through all the stuff I went through when I first got on the council, and we went through the dam discussion before, that, you know, the benefits to the Park District are just part of what the benefit is to the city as a whole, and, you know, the Park District needs to be part of this. And, you know, not just being here, but they also need to step up with funds when we get into not only the engineering, but the construction side of it. And maintain it's into the future, because the pond that's back behind us is going to change, and the maintenance issues are going to change on it, the size of it's going to change, the scope of it's going, I mean, there's so many things that are going to be different, and I think that it's really important that we get a long-term commitment from them to move forward on this, because I think it benefits everybody.
Yeah, well, and the redesign of what happens to the dam, no matter what happens, whatever design comes out of it, they get advantages from that too, that, oh, well, now we can do a livery, or something, if they want to do something different, they're going to be able to do other things that they can't do right now, so, they, everybody benefits, but then everybody should pay.
Anybody else?
No, kind of along the lines of Mark, as I was reading through the MOU, you know, I felt like it was all the burden put on the city, and I was like, is the Park District also going to be presented with this to turn this in also, from that standpoint? Because I noticed on number seven, it said the city and, and I'm like, eh.
Yeah, I got the same impression, reading the document, I think our situation is unique, not completely unique, but most of the time, DNR is simply dealing with one party that owns the dam that they are seeking to remove, and they know that we have the Park District involved, and I think they just anticipate that between the Park District and the city, we will work out the, the joint responsibilities, and/or assign them to one or the other in our own negotiations, but I think they contemplate we will present them with an agreement with three signature lines on it.
And on some level, it is a bit of a shell game. Taxpayers paying, is paying for this, whether they're going to pay, our coffers, the Park Districts, it's important that we share.
Or the state money, I mean.
For sure.
That's right.
We're all paying into it.
And Gary, you had some?
Just along the lines, Laura kind of took exactly what I was going to say, but I won't be surprised, a little bit different than what she said, I won't be surprised if the state is only going to enter an agreement with us, because we're the owner of the dam. We would have to have probably a separate IGA with the Park District, that would, that would, I don't know if the state's going to enter into an agreement with the Park District.
Fair enough.
No, and that's fine, but I think, in my mind too, it's also important that the state sees that there's more than one entity that's involved and committed to this. And that may also help with their decision on funding, you know, doing it and moving forward with it. If the Park District wanted nothing to do with this and nothing to do with us trying to figure that out, they may shy away from trying to get in the middle of that.
Right.
They've made it clear that they're not interested unless we're united.
That is exactly true. They want to see that, similar to the prior discussion, that the city is all in, the Park District is all in, not only do we want to see it happen, but that we'll be able to come up with the aspects of it that do require us to back it up monetarily.
Not against the dam coming out, but thinking kind of forward, like, because obviously it's going to change the levels of the river, what potential effects will that have on the Mahoney Creek tributary, you know, what effects is that going to cause, because obviously we've had some challenges with there, is that going to cause everything to flow more quickly through that, is it going to slow it down?
No, that's downstream of our dam, where it inlets into the river, it really won't have any effect on it, I can't imagine that would have any, Gary might.
No, the big thing is the mud flats, the vista, you're not going to be able to see the big, broad river anymore, all of that changes though.
Yeah, Alderman Chanset's correct, so from...
Wrote down a note.
From immediately downstream of the dam, if you could walk into the boil, if you will, from that point continuing downstream, there won't be any difference. From that point going upstream, roughly, I think it was roughly to Fabian Parkway, I think was what the original study showed, that stretch, you're going to see a difference.
Like dozens of acres of mud flat and new grass that will start growing.
Yeah, and if I can, and not, I'm not disputing what you're saying, but let's term it, let's be branding, let's be branding, it becomes dozens of acres of new upland wetlands, or new riparian environment.
Bike paths.
Well, no, it's riparian environment, it's made for the birds and the wildlife, and it's going to be natural grasses and flood plain, it's still flood plain.
And a couple times a year, it will be water.
Yes.
A couple times a year, it will be water, the one thing...
It won't be mud.
The one thing, say for certainty, will not get wider than it is today. That won't happen. Mark?
Yeah, I think the, the two things, is obviously safety is number one, but it also advertises it's the right thing for the river, it's for the health of the river, the river will only get healthier. I paddle on a lot of rivers, and I was on the DuPage River the other day, and I was just amazed at how healthy that river is, the water's clear, you can see all the plants when you're going down it, it's good for the river, it's good for the fish. Number two is with Hitchcock, that, I feel good about that too, since they, it's, the whole thing ends up starting to flow in, into each other, so that this is, it brings all the communities almost to one, it makes it easier, because going north on the river is a piece of cake, so now people can go up and down between multiple cities, and it's really easy, because it does not flow quickly at all. Sometimes it's actually harder to go south when the wind is blowing.
So we're going to have to have a dock area for it to use and kayak?
Absolutely, we should be building up and using it, I was, I was telling Laura early, I'm disappointed when I kayaked on the DuPage through Naperville. There's nowhere in Naperville to dock a canoe or a kayak, and I'm like, are you kidding me? I'm paddling past restaurants, why would there not be a place for me to put my canoe or kayak? Yeah.
Let them stay that way, and we'll get this out, and we'll have all kinds of docks out here.
We need to really, that's, that's a part, that's another part of entertainment and stuff that you can capture.
Alderman Miller?
Dan? Kind of going along with what Jenny said, I don't know where this was, the South Dam, wouldn't that have been more of a kind of question with the impact for Mahoney Creek? Wasn't that, was that above it?
That would have affected the river pool coming up towards us, and maybe a little bit north of that, I think it actually made it almost to the waste treatment plant, the effect of the South Dam. But that dam had been broken for so long before that, that it really didn't affect the river level that much. I mean, like, North Aurora's dam, I don't even think it gets out of North Aurora's boundaries before there, the effect of that dam stops on the river.
Yeah, and that's kind of like, I think where you were going with, you know, the question of how Mahoney Creek would be impacted, we already had kind of precedent when the South Dam got removed of, did it really change anything? And that would have been more of a direct impact, because that was closer to it, and that's where I just don't know if it was above it or below it.
Yeah, and I think the drop, you got to remember, Mahoney Creek, even from where it starts all the way in the east, to where it ends up in the river, the drop is radical, I mean, that's a really big drop. It's only, I want to say it's only like ten feet difference, or twelve feet difference, between the Batavia North Dam and Geneva. I mean, it's not that big a difference from each end. Anyone else? So we didn't have anything to really vote on tonight, you were just looking for continued support for us?
Exactly, and I'll get the joint meeting set up.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to item lucky number thirteen, approval of the third round of COVID-19 grants for small businesses and not-for-profits.
Yes, so, we just had a couple of questions to work out, final questions before implementing the third round of the COVID-19 grants, we wanted to make sure that it was okay to make churches eligible for this grant, and we have checked with the city attorney, who is here tonight, that it is, because we are opening it up to all not-for-profits, and it is to pay for COVID safety items. So just to reiterate, this is a program for businesses and for not-for-profits that are located within the city of Batavia, employing less than ten full-time employees that accommodate the public in person. They are eligible for grants of up to one thousand dollars to purchase COVID-related safety items, and also for the purchase or rental of tables and chairs for outdoor seating areas. And City Council has allocated twenty thousand dollars of the economic development funding that was left over from a now-defunct Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Grants that ended back in 2015. Even having allocated that twenty thousand, there is still sixty thousand dollars remaining in that fund to be used in the future toward other economic development programs that the city would like to use that for. The grant applications, we will have a press release tomorrow morning that we can begin accepting applications, application, the grants will be provided on a first-come, first-served basis, and there are two different types of reimbursement that can be applied for. The first is if items were purchased between April first and September The first is if items were purchased between April 1st and September 1st of this year and they fall into those categories, we will reimburse that. But for items which have not been purchased, we identify local businesses from which the applicants must purchase the eligible items from. Those are Emergence Safety Supply, Accurate Door, Barco Products, Arthur P. O'Hara, Whiskey Acres for Hand Sanitizer, Unique Party Rentals, Con Printing for signage needs within the businesses, and R&amp;M Specialties. And contact information for all of those businesses is located in the application. And then they the grants are provided on a first-come, first-served basis until the $20,000 mark has been reached. In the event that we haven't reached that amount, the applications must be received by September 17th so that we are able to close out that that program and then reallocate the funding that has not been used. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question. It's more of a comment. I wasn't here last week. I was still working, but I was listening to some of this going on. And I think maybe Sherry had asked about the, that the initial point of the grant was economic development. And I think it kind of came to that point, but I just wanted to reiterate and with churches being part of it. I believe that this, these supplies are back towards getting the public back out into the public so that we're doing it as safely as possible and alleviating fears and concerns. And that is what we really need to get the economic gen- generation back into the community. The more people feel comfortable and know that I can have protection at a church, I can have protection at this type of business or that type of business, the more that we make that available, we're creating that environment of we take safety as a as a priority. And this was on an unexpected cost for everyone. And it, we're trying to get everybody back out into the public. So in my mind, it is economic generation.
Anybody on the phone have any comments? Would you like a motion on this for approval?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make the motion for approval on the third round of COVID-19 grants for small businesses and not-for-profits.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Callahan. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien? Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler? Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knott? Chanet?
Aye.
And Baron?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
I'd like to put that on regular agenda so we can talk about it.
Sounds good.
It's something we should talk about. Okay, next up will be project status.
So I'll start with an update on our bike share program. We do not have an update on the date that we will receive the e-bikes. And I just received notice from the representative at Kane and Kendall Council of Mayors, who is the coordinator of the program for that organization, that he attended a Kane County Forest Preserve District meeting at 5 o'clock this evening where the bike share program was requesting that the Forest Preserve District reconsider their prohibition of e-bikes on the trail system. And they decided that they would not. So e-bikes will be, continue to be prohibited from being used on the, that portion of the bike trail system, which is under the jurisdiction of the Forest Preserve District. Now, we're still waiting for our e-bikes to be delivered and there is no delivery date. I have written an email to Colony requesting a refund of that portion of our, what we paid for having bikes this season for the time period that the program was running and we have not had bikes. But given the fact that the Forest Preserve District continues to prohibit the use of the e-bikes on their trails, I am wondering if city council would like to consider, rather than purchase of e-bikes, to go back to pedal bikes for this season, for me to see if they have pedal bikes in stock. Can those be delivered to us in short order?
I'd like to have the Colony representative standing behind the microphone in the middle of this room.
Sounds good.
And ask them personally why they're not here. I mean, if 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 this was me at my job and I held somebody like this, I wouldn't have a job very long. So I'm not real happy with that. I really don't like the fact that we don't have an answer yet from the company. So as soon as you could arrange that, I'd love to see him down here to explain to us what happened.
Al, the, I'm not arguing with you at all. The thing I'm hearing is that there's some, appears to be some unanswered questions about insurance on these things. And who's paying the insurance?
On the electric bikes or on any of them?
Any of these rental bikes.
Okay.
Oh, I thought that was, it wasn't worked out in our contract.
I thought we had that in the contract.
Yeah, we have indemnification in our contract. Or, I mean, it's not going to come back against the city for it. The person who's riding the bike, you know, whether a person who is injured by someone who is riding the bike will be able to recover for the injuries that they sustained. That probably is still an outstanding question. But the documents between Colony and their patrons, the patron is signing a waiver that they have no claim whatsoever against Colony or Colony's partners, and we are a Colony partner.
Abby?
Two questions about the bike availability. When we were, when we signed on and they said, we have ordered all the bikes and they'll be really quick. Was it, was it that they were? And then when when we deferred our investment for a couple of months, did they devote those bikes elsewhere and that's why they're not available to us? Or were we just misinformed at the beginning that those bikes were originally available?
I think we were misinformed in the beginning that those bikes were available, but I can't be sure which one is true. All I know is that they say, we are awaiting shipment of your bikes and we don't have any, we don't have a shipment date. I mean, that continues to be the mantra.
And then my second question in regards to going back to regular bikes. I guess when they were talking about this, you know, countywide system or, you know, Fox Valley wide system and the e-bikes were available, that the, that the e-bike dispute on bike paths had been cleared up, I guess I didn't
I thought so, too.
But the thing, e-bikes, my bike, I can turn off the e-capability and ride it like a normal bike. So going up and down these hills, I can't get up and down them without the electric assist. Going up and down the trails, I can turn them off and be trail legal. So there is that option if we want to continue with the e-bikes for that kind of ease.
I would love to see how the county is going to enforce that.
There is that. I mean, it's like, it's a speed limit thing. And that's kind of what I thought it came down to, that there is a speed limit on the trails.
That's correct.
We don't have cyclist training on them. I had heard that there was a, and again, I haven't looked into the thing. You know, because there are bikes with throttles and then there's electric assist where you have to keep pedaling. And where the line was drawn there, I was always a little fuzzy on. I just turned mine off and hope I don't get pulled over.
I've actually had, in the past couple of months,
Try and catch me.
Several people that I've talked to that have bikes. I ran into a guy a week ago that rides at least twice a summer to Lake Geneva and back. He's now got a bike that he can have electric assist for the hills that he has to handle there and back. He can get from St. Charles to Lake Geneva and back on one battery, which to me is just amazing. So I look into that bike.
I can tell you that we were induced into signing the agreements by the promise that the bikes were available. That I can assure you. But whether that was misinformation or not.
Right, was that at the time that we were presented to it and then COVID hit and then we deferred signing the agreement for a couple of months? So
It was after COVID.
It was after COVID, okay.
Yeah.
So it's a rocky start here, to say the least, with with Colony. But I will continue to seek the city of Batavia getting value for whatever it has invested in this program.
Yeah, and if, you know, I don't know what communication has been like with them. But if there's a possibility to get some type of bike to get that plan, you know, or that program working here, so people are aware that there are bikes where they're at and, you know, and how they can use them, I'd like to see something, you know. Even if that means they give us 10 free regular pedal bikes for this year to make up for not. I don't know what the, I don't know what the answer is to that. But again, I feel really bad that we said we're going to do this to the public and we've done, and nothing's materialized yet. And I'd like an answer from somebody from that company here for everybody on the council and the public.
I can tell you that what press I have seen about the fact that Batavia program is not running has been, the the reason given was that they have not received their bikes. So I don't think it's a reflection on the city, what the problem is right now. But it's still, it's just a bad situation that we'd like to be up and running in this program.
Alan? I was going to ask, so if the Forest Preserve is not going to allow us to use these e-bikes on their trails, in no time in the future, do we, do we not even pursue this anymore and look for the pedal bikes? That's what I'm
I think we
That was everybody else was thinking as well? If we can't use e-bikes on the trails.
You can use them, you just have to turn the electric assist off.
I don't know. They said no e-bikes.
That's the question I also wanted to know is, like you said, where's the line?
What I don't get is, the county is the one that's giving us money back on this. The county is participating in a grant program for us and yet they knew upfront.
We were going to use e-bikes.
That's what, that's one of the things that was an option was the e-bikes.
Right.
You know, does that mean we have to, as city council, put heat on the county and the Forest Preserve?
I didn't realize that.
To change that, because I think that's
It surprised me this afternoon.
Right, so that, those are the questions that is, is, are these bikes, can we turn off the e-assist? Can they be turned off and we still use them on the trails?
Yeah.
Or are they saying not at all?
I mean, I think of all the people that I see riding bikes with an e-assist bike that they're pulling burly with kids in it. I mean, I I think of how many more miles I probably would have put on with my kids had I not had to go back up the hills, you know, either walking it or really huffing it to get up the hill, you know, with kids in the back.
So yeah, I I like having him here and asking him questions about where our bikes are, but also us discussing with the Forest Preserve and with Kane County, like, do we, can we use these at all?
Yeah, see, I think those are two questions. And I think regardless of what we get back from Colony, I think that's something that we as a council, if we want to see this type of stuff happen, because this is going to be something that's going to be out there a lot more prevalent in the future, the e-assist bikes. I mean, the prices have come down quite a bit from where they started and I foresee them coming down even further in the future. So I think that's going to become a much more common thing. And we have a ton of trails out here that if they're not accessible by that, people are going to go where they can do that. And then we're going to lose those potential consumers in our town. And I don't want to see that happen.
I think you have to ask yourself at the end of the day, who's making the money here?
Well, nobody's making any money if they don't get bikes to us.
Yeah, but you got these companies that are trying to rent us bikes.
Yeah.
I mean, are they having second thoughts that they're probably not going to make much money, given all the rules and developments that are
Well, and that's why I say I think that's kind of wrong on the county's perspective is to not allow those.
I I think the whole thing is down to who's, is anybody making any money here? I think that's the question at the end of the day you need to ask, we need to ask.
Well, the thing that comes to my mind is, you know, if we get regular bikes as opposed to e-bikes, with all the theft of bikes in the area, are these bikes going to start getting stolen?
Well, they're supposed to have a That's in the contract, what happens in that, if the bike is missing for seven days, they replace it.
Right, but if if all of our bikes get stolen and we have to wait seven days to get refilled with bikes, you know, it's like, oh, here's a bike today, but now you have to wait seven days. I still think it's a good program, but, you know, just reading all the theft and seeing people like I, in the middle of the day, the bikes are getting stolen, from what I'm seeing. And I just wonder what the other communities, if they've dealt with the bikes being stolen and how they've dealt with that also. Because obviously, it's not just in Batavia that this is happening. You know, you're seeing, you know, break-ins to cars in other areas, too. So, you know, I'd be interested in hearing if they're also dealing with the theft of those bikes, especially with all the bikes that are getting stolen around here.
Okay, I got a lot of good feedback and, Alderman Callahan?
No, just still under project status, I have a question, but if you're still talking about that.
Nope, I have another topic for project status, unless you'd like to ask your question?
It's just about Main Street. We received the update from Harry Heitzman, resident over there. There was a bunch of concerns, but mainly, is it on track? The project for what his main concern was this year to kind of what we were anticipating late October, most likely November.
I think the original finish date was November 15.
Yeah, so I I actually met with Harry this afternoon at 1:00 PM and explained the project to him. I think, I think he he captured all of that in his email, that he understands the complexity of this project. Like we, starting from last year, we, the electric department went out there, moved their poles in anticipation of this project. And at the beginning of this project, we did water main on the north side of the project. Then we actually started installing storm sewer from the, from the Water Street End and now proceeding and now we are actually almost in front of his house at the, at that intersection. Now, in in February of this year, we had an open meeting and we met with a lot of residents and businesses. And we told them that the project is actually going to be done this year. Now, at that time, we didn't know the COVID is going to happen in March and how it's going to impact the project. What has happened is, due to the COVID or coronavirus, NICOR could not do their project on a timely basis. NICOR, part of this project, NICOR was asked to relocate their gas main. So when they relocated their gas main, they had to reconnect all the residents to the new gas main. Now, NICOR had a moratorium, if you want to say, due to the coronavirus, they could not go into people's house to connect them. In many cases, you know, so that that was some delay. And when they got the permission to go into people's house, a lot of residents didn't want to give them permission to come into their house and put in the new service. So NICOR was supposed to be done in like four weeks. They finally got done the beginning of August. So they are, if you want to say, like four months behind. So what our contractor did is, rather than bringing a lot of people and trying to do the project in very fast, he had enough manpower so that he doesn't catch up to NICOR. He was right behind NICOR so that as NICOR is getting done and he was also progressing. So four weeks ago, when NICOR said we are done, he has actually mobilized two more crews into the project. So now if you go out on Main Street, you will see almost three crews working, you know. He's, he's working, the main crew is working on the storm sewer. There is a crew who is now doing water services and sanitary services. There is a third crew that has come to the city and they will start at the Water Street intersection to remove the pavement, remove the existing street and start putting the new street. So what we have done is, we have talked to the contractor since the beginning of the project, when we knew that NICOR was delaying the project, and I don't wanna throw NICOR under the bus here, it's just because of the coronavirus thing. So, so we have been in constant contact with the contractor, we meet on a weekly basis. What we have done now, in the last four weeks, we are pretty much looking at Route 31 and Main Street as two, two separate projects. So we asked the contractor, can you get done with, if you consider this as two different projects, can you get done? So he has presented a schedule to us, which shows that if we do not get bad weather, in a sense, you know, rains for seven days at a stretch, or, you know, we get snowfall in early October or something like that, then he will get done with Route 31. The entire portion of Route 31 will be done, and on Main Street, he's showing that he will mostly done with, what we call it, the binder course, which means the top two inches of surface layer will not be done, and the landscaping will not be done. But the road will be, it will have brand-new curb, it will have brand-new sidewalk, it will have brand-new street, just the top two inches, because he will be into December when we expect the weather to be cold, and when it's cold, you don't wanna pave the street, because if you pave, that road is not gonna last long. So he's showing that, well into Thanksgiving, he will be able to get done with the entire project. So he's behind schedule, but he has plan, and we are tracking the plan on a weekly basis. We are saying where you are, this is what you showed, and where you are this week. So as of today, we, we met today for the weekly meeting at 10:30 this morning, he showed that whatever his plan was four weeks ago, he is right up to that plan. So it's going according to the plan, and we are expecting to be, I, I wanna call it substantially complete, so the landscaping will not be done, because if you put the grass in, in December, it's not gonna grow. So he's gonna come back and, and put the grass, and, you know, touch up all the landscaping in next year, but our projection is, if the weather holds, we will be done with the most of the work at the end of this year, which means Thanksgiving or right after that. Harry, you wanna add something? So, if you want, we can, you know, every Tuesday morning, we meet with the contractor, we track, I mean, we have printed a big schedule that he has prepared, and we track it. If you want, I can send you a weekly update, telling you where we are, you know, are we behind, or are we ahead? He's not showing any Saturday work, right now, he's showing Monday to Friday work, and the plan is to do block by block. What I mean by that is, so next week, he's gonna take out the, the existing street between Water Street and Route 31. So he's gonna completely dig it up, he's gonna put stone back, then he's gonna come back and, and put the curb and sidewalk, then he's gonna put the asphalt back, so that block is done. Then he's gonna move to the next block, which is kinda a longer block, between 31 and Lincoln, but again, we are not gonna dig up more unless we know that we can put it back. So, let's say, come Thanksgiving, the weather was bad, we fall behind in schedule, we are not gonna dig up the entire street. We'll probably dig up, up to Jackson, or maybe Harrison, you know, and put that back. But from Harrison to Whipple, we will probably put back some temporary pavement. What I mean by that is, whatever we have dug up, we'll, we'll put back more stones in there, and we'll put little bit of asphalt so that it is drivable, so that it is plowable throughout the winter, and come back and finish it. But it's too early right now to say that we are not gonna be able to do from Harrison to Whipple. But that's a possibility, you know, and, and it, it's because we got behind, it's not the contractor got behind, or anybody got behind, it's because of the coronavirus restrictions, NICOR could not get that done. I mean, if you go out, you will see AT&T is still working on Route 31, you know, so everybody got behind. It's not only, you know, NICOR is not only dealing with Batavia, they had projects in other places too, where they were behind, you know, so it, it, even though it, you know, in our mind, there is lot less cars traveling down Main Street, or, you know, anywhere in the city, the construction, actually, it was good for us that less people are traveling down the street, but it, it impacted in a different way. We were just talking in engineering today, that a lot of people are now working from home, you know, so that, that was a different, that's, that poses a different problem, because now you're working from home, and you hear all this construction equipment in front of your house, going up and down, you know, it's, it's a lot more noise. So people get upset about all that when they are on a conference call, on an office call, and all that. So it's, it's a different dynamic, different challenges this year, but he is, he is, he has brought in more manpower, because we talked about how, how we can expedite the project, how we can get done this year. He wants to get done too. So, so we are working towards that, hopefully, we'll not see any inclement weather, like long periods of rain, or, or early snow, or, or cold weather. Typically, you know, up, up until Thanksgiving, they have opened up the asphalt plants, and you can buy asphalt and, and lay it down. So hopefully, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to do that, and, and get the project almost complete, but I, I can't, I will not promise that we are gonna be complete completely. That's not gonna happen, because landscaping is, is not gonna happen this year. Yes?
You, you mentioned a Monday through Friday schedule, is it appropriate to throw a couple of Saturdays, or all of the Saturdays in?
So, that, that, probably, we can discuss that, because Saturday is considered a premium time in contractors' schedule. We haven't asked him to do that, because we'll have to pay. IDOT has a provision, if you want the contractor to work on Saturdays and all that. Again, he hasn't done that so far, because he was worried that he will catch up to NICOR, and then he will run out of work. But if we, if you, if we ask him to do that, he, he will probably turn around and ask us for premium time. That's a, that's something he may ask. He's, you know, I mean, if you're a contractor, you are probably thinking that, you know, how do I make more money out of something, right? So, if we get into that weather situation, we can probably, we'll most likely discuss that with the contractor, and then bring it to you for, for approval. But we can take the proactive approach right now, saying, hey, how about you work on Saturday? He'll immediately say, it's, it's time and a half for, for my crews.
The only reason I ask is if they did a Monday through Saturday schedule now, and they finished our project, their crews will be free to begin with another project and make more money next year. Just saying if they can move on.
Yeah, so, when it's the contractor's issue, he's more than happy to work Saturday?
I get it.
In this case, it's, it's, he can legitimately point to other issues, and so he's, he doesn't wanna pay his crews extra. And with the weekly, Laura's weekly updates to you, I think if you go back into the springtime, you'll see me starting to make generic statements for months now about Main Street tracking behind schedule.
Yep.
Early on, we had hoped to be able to catch back up, but you'll see that nomenclature dropped about six weeks into those updates, and it's because of this NICOR issue that we've been tracking for most part of the summer here.
I mean, the, the good part is, and I, I explained that to Harry, that it's all brand-new water main, it's all brand-new storm sewer, it's all brand-new services to everybody's houses, so knock on wood, if nothing else goes wrong, nobody will see us for 20 to 25 years over there. You know, I, I, you know, I mean, it, it's a massive project, I mean, it's, it's, something like this hasn't happened in the city for a while, it, it does disrupt your life, no question asked, you know? And, and there is no sugar coating to it, you know, and, and people being at home, it's, it's really inconvenient, because you are trying to go to grocery store, it's a one-way street, the contractor is, you know, has a lot of equipments there, if there is a truck that is getting loaded, and, and he did dig up 20 feet, you know, a deep hole, that's a lot of material coming out. So you are waiting behind a truck for, for, for few minutes, you know, until the truck is loaded and moved on, and then you can move on behind the truck. So, it, it's inconvenience when you are on a time crunch, but, but we are almost, you know, it's September already, three, three more months, and, and hopefully, we'll, we'll, you know, put all this behind us and, and move on. On, on a similar note, Prairie Street is actually tracking earlier, that, that contract will most likely, or they will probably get done by end of this month, again, I don't wanna jinx it, they, they also have the similar schedule, they have till November 15th to get done, but they will get done most likely by end of this month. That project was less scope, we didn't do all storm sewer, so it was a little bit of less scope than, than this project. Main Street, we are installing 16-inch, 48-inch big storm sewer pipes, you know, for future, future separation of, you know, other, other side streets. So, it was a much bigger project and much bigger scope.
So I just have a couple more things that I'd like to discuss. Scott Haynes in the Public Properties and Services Department explored the possibility of hiring a cleaning service to help with the cleanup in the public dining areas, and it's less than $300 to have them come out periodically between Thursday and Sunday and do that, so we're gonna hire that service for the remainder of this season to do that.
And that's just on River Street?
Is it just on River Street, or is it also on...
No, there was a picture of Water Street in there too, so...
Yeah, both of them.
And it's Thursday through Sunday, and I think nine o'clock or 9:30, Laura, I can't remember what time they were coming out.
I thought it was 9:30.
Yeah, it's around that time at night.
Right. And what they'll do is, they're gonna pick up the garbage, if the garbage cans are full, then they'll swap them out for an empty garbage receptacle, they're gonna clean all of the surfaces, the tables, the chairs, on North River Street, disinfect the chess pieces, they're gonna look for if there are any railings or touched surfaces in that area, they're gonna disinfect those as well.
And is that on Saturday too, with our farmer's market at 9?
Yes.
9, 9:30 at night, not 9:00.
Oh, 9:30 at night, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
So it should be cleaned by the morning, because the dining areas close down at 9:00. With regard to the dining areas, we have had a request by a private organization, they have a ticketed event that they wanted to host at the outdoor public dining area on South Water Street, and that's the first of those requests that we have received, but I can't imagine that it will be the last. And so I don't know, as a policy, whether we want to close those areas down for private events, or if the idea is that they should always be open to the public being able to dine there from the area businesses.
I don't know, they wanna pay $300 for a cleaning?
What's that?
Would they pay $300 for the cleaning?
I imagine they would.
I'm kinda torn, I, I mean, I'd like to see that there, because I'd like to see the people downtown, because having been to most of the events that are like that, or different things in town, you always end up going somewhere else afterwards, so, you know, that could provide something for the other businesses in town, because you'd have all those people down here, but do we wanna take that area away from businesses that are there? And that...
I think if it became a regular thing...
Right, and that's just one night, right? The 7th, I think, was in your...
Yes.
Is that a Friday, Friday night, or...
Do you know how many tickets they're looking at selling?
I don't, but I would imagine that they could not sell more than 50, since that's currently phase four restriction, is only gatherings of 50 people.
The benefit is limited.
What kind of organizations wanna rent it?
Um, this, this request was from the chamber.
That was like Alan, where it was kind of like, creating a policy on how many times do we realistically think that this might happen, you know, on a one or, one or two-z kinda offshoot, just come to us and say, yeah, probably for that. If it starts to then become time and time again, but I just don't see a lot of the, a lot of the necessity for creating a whole policy, and all of the kind of what-ifs, and what about this, that may occur as a result of it, it, it seems like with, with restrictions being changed on a moment's notice, with, you know, 50 this week, and maybe 25 the next, it, it would be so, have to be so nimble that I think it's just kinda keep it open, but if somebody brought an idea to us, that we could give the, the blessing.
The event, the other weekend though, I mean, that was, how do you define the event that happened the other weekend? Is that just programming?
That was open to the public, it wasn't a ticketed event.
Good point, okay.
But I know, I know a group, the Batavia Women's Group, Diane Anderson, yeah, she had messaged and said, who do I contact about having a monthly meeting up there? And I'm like...
Just show up.
Right.
It's a public space.
Yeah, and that's where I was kinda thinking that, and I see that they did actually do it on River Street, so, it didn't, and that's where I'm kind of like, with you on it, it seems to work itself out, it's only, what do you do if it's a ticketed event, and maybe that just...
They're trying to reserve space.
Right, and then maybe on that, it's a case-by-case basis where we just kind of look at it.
So this is, they want exclusive use of the area to put a tent over it, so, and then it would be from 6:00 to 8:00 that evening, so do we wanna say, no public, it's just for this event on that evening?
I mean, do we set a policy, it's like, no more than once a month, or something like that, and that way it doesn't get out of hand? I don't know, it's, because you don't want it every weekend, that, oh, great, now, you know, every Saturday, nobody can go down there, but if it was one out of every late weekend day...
Well, and not everything that's on that is ours, this is the city's on Water Street.
It is. It's all donated from Barco Products.
The umbrellas and everything too? I thought those were provided by Batavia Enterprises.
Yeah.
I thought they paid for all the umbrellas...
And lighting.
And the lights.
Tables were donated, and the lights, so, I mean, as long as, I guess, as long as, if there's anybody else involved in that, as well as us saying okay to it, that the chamber has that worked out with them, I think one time is fine.
So check with the, with BEI to make sure that it's okay with them.
Yeah. I wouldn't doubt that BEI is part of the sponsorship of the event anyway.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Go ahead. How can we decide to shut a public street down for someone, but then say no to somebody else?
Well, how about we just use the pre-existing block party permits that we have?
Pre-existing block party?
Well, when you've got a block party, well, where if you're shutting down a street, you're shutting down the street for kind of neighbors in that neighborhood, but not all the neighbors might take part in it. It has the same kind of feel, let them do a, let the organization or the entity that's wanting to do for River, for Water Street, I don't think for River Street, because that is just way too complex, but Water Street has a block party permit going through the process, that, that always vets itself out well.
Except at a block party is, I mean, it's, like, this would be, if you don't have a ticket, you can't come in, whereas a block party is a potluck where anybody shows up.
Right, and I'm just saying, there's a lot of similarities there for how do you, how do we know who's, who it's going to be, and the saying yes or no process to it, there's a lot of the same, it's not exact, because nothing is exact anymore for, for these situations, but it's a potential avenue, or at least guidance as to, we do something similar, how can we tailor that for this situation for that one street? And again, it might not be all the, we might be only looking at this event for this next three, three months, and that's it.
Now, that's a Wednesday night, October 7th, so I guess my feeling would be, it's not taken away from Friday or Saturday night, which is probably the biggest night of use that I've seen personally down there on Water Street. So...
This is a private event.
On a public street, though.
And it is not unusual that we have private organizations hosting, I mean, Main Street is a, you know, a similar type of entity, and they host events, like cocktails in the park, they have on a public space, and it's a ticketed event, so there's precedent.
Okay, that's, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, yeah, there is precedent.
And again, I think if the interested parties that have interest in that... And again, I think if the interested parties that have interest in that, I, I don't think it's going to hurt, you know, Daddy O's isn't open after 7:00, so they're not going to be there on Wednesday night. Riverside is more than happy to cram as many people as they can onto their space and inside the building, so I don't think we're going to hurt them. The bike shop will be closed, I don't know if Panera's open that late.
No.
There's hours have been really strange, 3:00 on Wednesday. So I, I don't think that we're really going to hurt.
No, I wasn't talking about them, I was talking about somebody else that might just not like, not like it, and, but we've done this, like you said, we've done this before with party.
We've done this before, and I also feel like, you know, the event's over, the people that are there are going to disperse to other businesses in town. I mean, we've done it time and time again, from everything that's happened down here.
No, I'm cool with it.
Well, and that's why it's like, two months ago, it wasn't there to begin with.
Right, I mean, this is all.
Yeah, they would have just gone to the park district and tried to get a park that they could put a tent up in, would be my guess. So I, I'd be okay with having them downtown, and then hopefully, they go somewhere else and spend some more money downtown.
Yep.
Sounds good, I don't hear any opposition.
Anybody on the phone want to comment? I don't think so.
Okay, some other things that I wanted to mention were that, I mentioned earlier in the meeting, but I'll mention now, that next week, Monday being Labor Day, Tuesday is the city council meeting, but also because Monday is a holiday, that means the advanced disposal refuse pickup schedule is one day later as well, so I want to make sure people are informed of that. And then finally, there are the mask up for Batavia yard signs, and so the organizers of that event drop those off, so that any of the aldermen who would like to take a sign for your yard can take one tonight. And then anyone who is listening to this presentation, if you want to sign for your yard, there is a website that they have set up, and you can request a sign to, from them. And it's maskupthenumberforbatavia.com. And there's an email address, and if you send a request to that email address, they'll get you hooked up with a sign. And that's all I have, and Project Status, unless anybody has any other questions.
Anybody have any others?
Just very quickly, just a reminder to the city council that on, also next Tuesday night, on the 8th, is the tour of the new substation. So I'll send a reminder out to everyone on that, with the details once again, but just to mark your calendars.
6:00 PM? It'll be before your city council meeting.
Be before your city council meeting.
That'll actually be better, because we have an extra half an hour.
Exactly, yeah.
I don't have a question, but I do want to share with you a couple inquiries I've received. I've had several people call and want to know, the city got anything in its plans to lighten up on the mask requirement? And my answer is, not that I'm aware of until such time as we hear that there are statistics showing that things are going in a different direction for the better, but then maybe things will lighten up, but right now, we would, so then I had somebody say, well, what are you going to do when Halloween comes? Are you going to require every kid with a costume on for their mask? I said, well, maybe they can incorporate it as part of their mask, or their costume. But this is one that keeps coming up, almost every day, somebody's wanting to know about the masks. And I've been a supporter of the masks, I still am, I put in a sign in my yard, but it is one that's got, there's another side to this in this town, of people who are very adamant about, we're stepping on their constitutional rights and everything else, because we encourage people to wear a mask, and they're having a real difficult time with it. So I just thought, oh, you should know that, that that's, that's out there, and there are people that are not friendly toward the idea.
Marty? Is it other?
Yep, we're in other.
But it's kind of a question for you. The resident that emailed about payment programs and mandated shut-offs, I just wanted to get some, not discuss her specifics, but more to the question of, what is the state mandate? Is it 18 months, two years before, or that you have to offer for utilities? Does it only apply to NICOR and not the city? Could you kind of just speak to that?
Sure.
So I'm sure we're going to get some more questions from people as times get a little tough.
So the giant private utilities are under the regulation of the ICC. And so the rules that were part of that message are something that had been developed for those organizations and mandated by the ICC. As a municipal utility, we don't fall under the ICC rules, and sometimes we can't match those kind of terms, because we are like this, you know, tiny company compared to the colossal giants that are the Amrens, and the Comeds, and all of those folks out there. However, just the same way, we are incredibly flexible as well. And so it didn't have to be COVID for us to come up with payment plans with our residents. As long as they communicate with us, and come up with a plan on how they're going to catch up, we always work with our residents to do that. The people who are in utility billing are incredibly compassionate people, and so if somebody is, the bill keeps stacking up, and you feel like, oh, I just can't stand to make, make the call, make the call, and, and just work out a payment plan. There, I can't think of any circumstance where utility billing couldn't figure out a plan that worked for people.
And that's exactly what I thought. It was more along the lines of making sure we're reiterating that out there, so that people do know all of the options, because some people just either don't know, or don't want to ask, and, you know, yes, there are difference with the economies of scale versus NICOR, but with that same kind of economies of scale, we can make exceptions from time to time, because we have greater flexibility also.
Right. Yes, thank you.
I, I would just chime in, because we couldn't reply all, I did reply directly to, to staff in this case, I gave them a thank you for being as compassionate, so I will echo your remarks. In this particular case, without getting too specific, if you can't afford $40 a month, you're not going to be able to afford $30 a month by extending it six months in this particular case, but they were still very compassionate the way they handled it.
Thank you, I'll pass that along.
This is an ongoing issue that we deal with since the day I got here, this has been floating around. And there is all kinds of reasons why they can't pay, and what's happened, and, I mean, a lot of it's a real heartbreak, and some of it I know has actually been occurring. And as Laura just said, our staff upstairs is a remarkable people. They can hold the ground if they have to, but they can also bend over and be compassionate, and as long as you're cooperative with us, and you send in the payment, I think we're pretty friendly and supportive. The one I think I've shared with you before, that I got really thrown in my face a couple times, was when we went out here and put the electrical charging stations in the parking lot, and I had a guy show up in my office with his three kids, and his little kids with him, and he hands me 20 bucks, and he says, I owe you $300, but I only got 20 to pay you. But he says, I'll tell you, I'm really rubbed, that I'm standing here trying to keep, keep my family in lights, and you're outside giving away that electricity to those people who can afford to buy thousands, thousands upon thousands of dollars a car. And so that's one of the reasons I pushed that we put the credit card component to that electrical charge out there, and I know it did reduce the number of people that are using it, but I think it's the only fair way to be. I mean, I, I don't know how to respond to that argument, that you're, you can't pay your electric bill, and your family's going to be sitting in the dark, but the city's down here giving away free electricity to electric cars. That one just didn't work in my mind.
Anybody else? We'll move on to item 16, executive session for the sale and purchase of real estate. So move.
And for those of you who are calling in this evening, I have just sent you a new call-in number via email, which you can hang up from this session, and I will reestablish that within the next one minute.
Can I get a second for subject of the session? Motion by Wolf, second by Zato, for executive session, roll call.
A lot of people have walked out, but I could do roll call if you'd like, a couple.
Okay. Few.
It won't be reflective, but.
No problem. Martin? How about we do by acclamation? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that way everybody.